Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. I'll send for the flag salute.
I said allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now can we have a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Marie.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmembers Sonmore attended via teleconference. Mayor Protem Wa.
Here.
Councilmember Gudar.
Present.
And Mayor Massimodo Wright.
Here.
Thank you. End of our call.
Thank you very much. So next on our agenda is the public comment section. Are there any public comments?
No public comment has been seen today. No public comment have been received. I emailed by 4:00 PM today and no virtual audience have been seen so far.
Wow. Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll continue on to the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We move to approve the consent calendar items A through F.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next is a proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. And I guess I'll read that. Okay, so City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation, National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is a 55-year-old national tradition of celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose roots can be traced across the Americas indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa and beyond. And whereas, Hispanic Americans are rooted in the Mount Lake Terrace community across Washington State and the country, and we honor the invaluable ways that Hispanics in America have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect their multi-ethnic and multicultural customs and adding their own distinct and dynamic perspectives to the story of our country. And whereas, Hispanics have and continue to serve as civil rights leaders, politicians, military, service members, educators, first responders, science pioneers, and public servants for our country. And whereas, the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, the day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence for Latin America, Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days in September 16th and September 18th respectively. Also, Dia de la Raza, which is October 12th, falls within the 30-day period. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month invites us to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilient and hope, encourages us to reflect on all of the contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future, and for all of us to work toward a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And now, therefore, I, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic National Heritage Month. And I'm going to hand this over to the city manager, who then will...
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. We had planned to have individuals here tonight to receive the proclamation. Unfortunately, at the last minute, they were unable to make it, but we will take this proclamation to the next meeting of the DEI Commission and present it to that commission at that time.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to move to number five, which is review and approval of the Robert W. Droll Design Agreement for Evergreen Playfields with our Parks Project Manager, Donnell Dayao.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Donnell Dayao, Project Manager, Parks Project Manager. What we have for you tonight is a design agreement for what we're calling Phase Two of the Evergreen Playfield Complex. We have RWD that was selected. And we'll talk a little bit about the... Give you a little bit of background on the history of the complex. Talk about the different phases of design work that we've been completing and the ones that we're going to be completing as a part of Phase Two. We'll talk about our tentative timeline for design and construction, and then talk about any questions and answer any questions you guys may have. So this is Evergreen Playfield Complex. It's situated off of 56th Avenue West and 224th Street Southwest. It's an eight-acre park space. Up on the north end, we have E1-2 that is a multi-purpose sports turf field. Just south of that, we have a playground area, a picnic area, as well as restrooms. South of that is the main parking lot with the maintenance building. And down on the corner of 56th and 224th is the ball field. And to the east, we have four tennis courts. So Phase One of the upgrades was completed in 2021. This was also supported with RCO funding, as well as a couple other agencies that supported financially as well. But they... We converted this sand field to a turf field, multi-purpose turf field. Phase Two, and what we're talking about tonight with this design agreement involves converting the infield, the ball field, infield to turf. We'll be replacing the backstop and dugouts and fencing, replacing wood light poles with new light poles and retrofitting existing metal poles with new LED lighting system. We'll be removing and regrading the bleacher areas as well as the press box and regrading those areas for seating and ADA access. And then we'll be also creating additional parking spaces on the northern end here as a part of the main parking lot. The second part of this project involves resurfacing the tennis courts and... Which also includes replacement of the fencing and lighting system as well. So you've got the three main courts down below, as well as the single court up towards the ballpark. A third component of the project involves replacing the two facility or the two maintenance... Or the two, sorry, the two buildings located on the premises. There's a maintenance and concession building located here in the picture, and then there's also the restroom building. So we'll be replacing both of those structures. The funding that we have secured for this project involves multiple RCO grants. So Land and Water Conservation Fund of $600,000 and Youth Athletic Facilities Grant of $350,000. Those combined both go towards the ball field. And we also have an additional Youth Athletic Facilities Grant for $350,000. That'll help go towards renovations on the tennis court. And we've also supplemented this with additional Parks City funding as well to come out to about $2.8 million to go towards the project for design and construction. With the contract amount that we have for RWD tonight, you can see we have about... We have $323,834 going towards design with about $2.5 million left over for construction. In March earlier this year, we posted and advertised an RFQ for design services, consultant services, and we received one submittal from RWD Landscape Architecture and reviewed their submittal. They are very well qualified. They actually were the firm that did the E1 renovations on the turf field. So we have experience with them. They have experienced staff and do many similar projects, park projects, playgrounds, athletic facilities, turf fields. So here is our tentative schedule as of the moment. We'll be getting into design here this fall and winter and spring. We'll go through permits, and then we'll have to, you know, discuss and figure out the best timing, but we're thinking of fall of next year after our events to do construction for this project. So staff tonight, we're recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the local agency agreement with RWD for the design of Evergreen Playfields Phase Two project. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see some renovation going to that area. I was wondering, the infield is going to have the artificial turf? And then is the outfield just going to continue to be lawn?
It'll remain grass.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? That's the councilmember Marie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for being here and for the presentation. I would echo Councilmember Ryan's thoughts that it's exciting to see these investments in our community. I just dropped off one of my kids at Evergreen One, and, you know, there's tons of usage there, and it's been neat to see how the investment in that park in particular has changed usage, particularly in our long coming soon dry or wet season. So excited about this. I guess I did have a question, I guess two questions. One was a question that had been asked around usage for those tennis courts as they are redone around pickleball. Can you... I think maybe we had talked about this at one point, but I guess there's folks in our community that have interest in that recreation ability and curious whether this kind of redoing of those tennis courts will facilitate that usage.
I think it's a discussion that we'll have to have. Also, looking back at the grant funding agreement as well to make sure that we're not changing any of those initial commitments that we made, but it'll be a discussion that we can have, yeah.
Sounds great. Thank you. I will say, I don't have any personal thoughts, but I know that there is some interest. So it would be great to understand once that discussion has had what that looks like. And then just the other question was around construction impacts. So I know it sounds like that's something you guys are already thinking about, but curious who the users tend to be during the timeframe that we're looking at construction and just what communication, if any, we've had or plan to have with them to make sure that they're aware of the change in availability.
Yeah. Construction will be... Timing of construction will be a little bit difficult and challenging, but, you know, we'll work with Daniel Ladd, who has connections with a lot of the... And coordinates a lot of those activities and sports leagues. I believe tentatively the fall is our least used, I guess. And we'd be going after our events like National Night Out and Tour de Terrace. So looking for the least amount of impact to athletics and other events, but it'll be kind of tight and challenging to make that happen.
Yeah, I would imagine. Well, thank you for being thoughtful of that. Appreciate it and very excited and look forward to seeing this progress. Thank you.
Did you have... Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there are no further questions, I will... Oh, sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Woodard.
My apologies. I thought you had a question. So thank you for the pickleball question.
I was going to bring that up, too.
Yeah. So that saves one question. That said, looking at construction, is it fair to say that come summer 2025, we should have a new plan in place for Tour de Terrace? And I'm just keeping in mind, we moved us off of the field for... Into the plaza successfully, but part of that was also we don't want those types of shoes walking across this very expensive new turf. And I'm just going to speak up for my baseball fans and say, we want the same thing for that infield. And so I don't know, is that us? Have we already started thinking about that? Is that even part of this discussion? And in the spirit of cans down roads, we have some time. But just kind of recognizing, summer 2025 is closer than it looks.
Yeah. I think that all stakeholders are going to have to be interviewed as part of this, and one of those is Tour de Terrace. So we've talked about some ways that we could kind of alleviate some of those concerns. I think Tour de Terrace would still be able to be out on that field, but we'd have to protect the infield. So there's different ways to do that with festivals where they roll out some surface to protect the turf itself. So that's a possibility.
Go ahead.
So follow-up question. Thank you for that. Please, actually suggestion. Please bring us pricing sooner rather than later because that's two budget cycles away. And if that's not already in here, this... I imagine that tarp is not cheap. So let's start thinking about how to budget for that because I would just point out, the beer garden is over the infield. If anybody needs to put that in perspective for yourself. That is pretty much everybody with money coming to the Tour de Terrace. They're not coming for the carnival. So it is a real problem, and it is something that we should be thinking about now. And if it's going to be another purchase, I'd love to see those numbers sooner rather than later.
I did want to bring up something about the pickleball. If at all possible, if we can get it changed to allow... Putting in four pickleball courts into the two. Because I... From what I understand, you can put two pickleball courts into one tennis court. And then you can also have it striped for tennis, too, from what I understand. Because I think that the community is going to find out that we redid our tennis court and didn't even think about putting in a pickleball court, and we're going to hear from them because they're already asking for pickleball courts right now. So if at all possible, if we can get anything changed to get that done, even if we have to just tweak the financing just a little bit, I think that we're going to have a much happier community.
Okay.
One of the pieces to this agreement also allows for public meetings. So I think there's two public meetings as part of this agreement itself. So we've already anticipated some of those issues. We plan to meet with user groups of the fields themselves because we did that for Evergreen One, and they really actually helped quite a bit with the lining of the field, what would be appropriate for those groups. But additionally, there are some, quite a few pickleball backers and quite a few that are actually in RPAC. So that's been talked about quite a bit already. So that's something we are anticipating as well.
Good. I don't play pickleball, and yet I've been hearing about this, so... But if we had a court, I might. All right. Go ahead. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to see this. I know how well-loved those activity spaces are. I'm going to ask a harder question about chrome rubber. You know, I've heard from Phase One, some hubbub in amongst neighbors about water quality impacts, especially around certain hydrocarbons and heavy metals. Are there any current, like, water treatment sort of requirements for installation of chrome rubber, which I think I understand to be mostly recycled car tires? Since we pay attention a lot to water quality around here, I'm curious to know if there's any storm drains nearby or how water on this infield will be treated, if at all. Thank you.
Through as a part of the design phase, we'll have to look at different types of underlayments and bases. So chrome rubber is one option. So we'll have to look at and evaluate, you know, alternatives as well. But I mean, it'll all be thought out and looked at during the design phase to figure out what makes sense to move forward with as a part of this project.
Okay. Now, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that note, on the chrome rubber, I recall us having that discussion years ago, and so it'd be probably helpful for all of us if we... If you enlightened us on what we talked about and what the conclusions were and what... Any information you had available on that previously would be helpful for us to reconsider as we're moving forward in this process. But with that, I will move to authorize the city manager to execute the local agency A and E agreement with RWD for Evergreen Playfield Design in an amount not to exceed $323,834.32.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Laura. Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Next is the review and approval of the agreement with Recreation Conservation Office, RCO, for Youth Athletic Facilities Grant for Evergreen Playfield Five with our Rexon Park Director, Jeff Betts. But I see that two of you are there.
Well, good evening again, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation Parks Director. And tonight, we're here to talk about an RCO grant. And this one is for the Recreation Conservation Office Grant for Youth Athletic Facilities. So I'm probably going to say RCO and YF way too much because those acronyms are probably overused by me. But the reason we're here is to review and approve a grant agreement to replace the lighting on Evergreen Playfield Number Five. So last year, the city did apply for grant funding to do this through the Youth Athletic Facilities Fund, and low and behold, we were awarded the funding. So part of the project would be to... At this point, would be to replace that lighting that's on that field. And so tonight, we're going to... Do you want to share that? Sorry, I don't think we're shared. It's okay. There we go. So we'll go over some of that information, the background, everything else on the agenda there, including scope of work, summary of funding, timeline, discussion, and request at council. So this project is located, Evergreen Playfield Number Five. It's just north of Terrace Park School and the Recreation Pavilion, and it's adjacent to the dog park. It's the easternmost diamond on the map you'll see here. It's actually a shared field property-wise with the school district. So from the infield east, the city owns, and west of that, the school district owns. So that shared property is... Goes back many, many decades, and the city has interlocal agreement with the school district, and that was most recently redone in 2021. And that interlocal agreement allows the city to schedule those playfields and to also maintain them, even though they're not our property. So to actually be able to apply for this project, the city had to extend that agreement. So if you remember, we came to council this last March and extended it 15 years to the agreement. So now it expires in 2048. So that was actually to satisfy an RCO policy to ensure that the ownership rights by the grantee would be for a minimum of 20 years of useful life. So the current conditions on the field are metal halide fixtures. So those are circa 1995. There's 26 total fixtures currently, so there's four poles. And those bulbs have approximately a three-year lifespan. It's very, very short, especially when they're used a lot. You know, the last few years, we haven't had to use them a lot because of the pandemic. But that really increases the maintenance costs for the city. The lift and electrician cost to get out there every couple of years, or anytime there's any problem at all, is about $5,000 just for a single pop to get out there. And a lot of times on that 90... Those are 90-foot poles down the line, the big tall ones on the left field and right field. So you have to get a very, very tall lift out there. So really, this project is going to make a big difference, I think, for many reasons. It's going to have really a large impact to the lighting quality of the field when we end up replacing this lighting. We're going to have new LED lighting. It's going to be a 25-year warranty on those LED bulbs. And when any bulb goes out, it will come out and replace it within that 25-year period. The city does not have to touch it. There will be three new metal poles installed on top of the four existing, and also conduit to those poles. I know it says two up there. That's a typo. So there's one by first base, one by third base, and then one in dead center field, actually on the other side of the fence by the playground at Terrace Park School. So all seven of those poles will have new pole top structures. So as I mentioned, it really will improve the lighting quality. It'll reduce the maintenance costs. And also those... That lighting actually has a mobile application that we can control the scheduling for, similar to what we can already do for the turf field on E1 and what we will do on E3 as well. So everything in the lighting system of Evergreen Playfields will be done from one phone. So that's a far cry from when I was doing that, and I had to make the long drive down. If there's any problem at all, there's no way to make a change unless you walked out to the field and pushed a button. So this will really be a step forward for Mount Lake Terrace and really for our field rentals and leagues in general. So that also potentially... Potentially, if we are able to mobilize both project, lighting project at the same time, we could reduce our costs quite a bit. But that's not guaranteed because we have not even contracted with a lighting vendor yet. So summary of funding for this project. There is a $241,000 grant through the Recreation Conservation Office Youth Athletic Facilities, and then also would be matched with $241,000 from Park CIP, which in this case, I believe, is wireless funds. And then a slight PUD rebate because we're actually going to be adding fixtures, but at the same time, they are so energy efficient, it actually will still be less energy being used. So schedule-wise, tonight is the grant agreement approval. And then we hope to actually contract with the entity through a purchasing cooperative by this winter and then move into a small design process and then construction sometime this summer, 2024, I should say.
So that should be winter of 2023?
Pardon me?
It's the winter of 2024.
It should be summer 2024. Yeah, next summer.
Purchasing cooperative bid contract, winter of 2024.
Well, January, still winter.
Okay. In the year of 2024.
Sometime by the end of the year, we hope to do it. Yeah. So is there any questions or discussion on this topic?
Are there any... Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple.
A couple. First one is just curiosity, looking back at, I think it's Slide 7, what are the numbers that we're looking at there? That's just going to bug me all day without knowing. They're all over the field. I'm trying to figure out what's that like.
Those are, those are lighting measurements?
That's what I thought.
Right, so they do candlesticks per foot, they go out there with the meter, and they check to make sure it meets whatever competitive level you're at.
Perfect.
So if it was Major League Baseball, it'd have to be a much higher candle level. So it's just the amount of light you actually are pointing at the field.
Excellent, that's what I thought was the case, which sets me up for the second question. See if you see this one coming. Migrating birds and light sources, I'm just learning a lot about that. Are there any concerns or do we have any intentions of leaving these lights on overnight or anything like that? Are these on a timer? Are they, like, how's that going to work out? Because I know we hear that every year about, like I said, migrating birds. And this will be a brand-new gorgeous new light fixture, and I'm just curious if we're...
So if you scroll up to, I think it's Slide, that slide right there, you could really see the difference, see the, this picture of the pole on the right side is what we currently have. It's not the exact one, but I'm just saying it's an example of the lighting. It's not directed lighting as much as the one on the left, which the new lighting system will be. So it really minimizes the spill and the glare. And our old lighting system on Evergreen 1, if everybody remembers that, you could see it all the way across town because it lit up the entire town, right? And then the new system, you really can't see it because it's shaded. So the neighbors really appreciate that. It makes a big difference.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you both for the presentation. And I will just, I want to make sure to say thank you and really good work on the continued efforts around grant funding. I mean, this is a great example of yet another project where you've gone out and found funds, you know, worked hard to receive funds in order to be able to move some of these projects forward. So first, I just want to make sure to say thank you. And then I did have a couple of questions actually on lighting as well, kind of building on what Councilmember Woodard was just asking, and actually kind of across all of our fields since it came up during this presentation. But I guess I'm curious how we determine when we light our fields. And I guess I'm asking specifically because we get to this point of the year where it is so dark, and because particularly, I think, we've seen like with Evergreen 1, the usage has gone up a lot, particularly in times of years, the year where maybe historically we haven't had usage because the ground was not of the type that it would have supported that. But now with an all-season turf, there is folks using it regularly, but I don't know that we've adjusted lights fully to accommodate for that. And I'm just, I'm curious how we're thinking about when we light the fields, particularly during some of our dark times of the year where it's dark at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, but field usage might be something that would interest the community outside of just like game and rec usage.
Yeah, that's a great point. Right now, we only book the lights if somebody has scheduled the field.
Right.
So typically, they're not on if somebody hasn't actually paid for them. And I mean, the cost to light is expensive if we don't have some kind of ability to cover that cost. So we've really worked into the total cost of lighting to make sure our fees covering that, and really also to work towards replacement costs down the line to make sure we're not just, you know, shortchanging ourselves long-term. But the new lighting systems can do a lot of things, so there are a lot of options. So if we would like to see some of those things happen, it's possible. There are systems that actually will turn on when people come out there. So that is an option. The current lighting systems that we have on 1 also have dimming functions where they will start lighter and then they'll get brighter as it gets darker. So there's a lot of new technology that can do a lot of really fun things that way. But I think that would be something we'd have to consciously make a policy to move forward on.
Okay. No, I appreciate that information, and I do think it would be an interesting conversation to have with RPAK and other members of our community. Because I do remember very distinctly noticing, you know, on like evenings, coming home where it's just like after work, and Evergreen 1 was dark last year. And I just have to think that there's probably, seeing how often it gets used, there has to, I would imagine that there's some folks that would be interested, but I think it'd be a good question to ask and a good conversation to have, particularly as we do have these lights that have less impact on our neighbors and wildlife. And hopefully, because they are more, you know, they save energy, I would hope that maybe the cost impact wouldn't be as significant as it would have been in the past. So, but very exciting stuff. And again, just appreciate the continued efforts to improve our local parks.
Did you have? Okay, Councilmember Salmer, I thought I saw your hand up. Did you have something to add?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to point out the LED lights, when we were upgrading the telephone poles, the LED lights made a huge difference, especially in the neighborhoods. And this is going to be a huge benefit to the neighbors who live in that area. But I also wanted to point out that that athletic complex, not only at the elementary school field, what tons of people use to walk every day, but also the tennis courts in the other field, that's going to be one beautiful athletic complex. I think we've already seen how beneficial updating the turf on the soccer and baseball fields have already been. My question is, is a small building behind the backstop going to come down?
Yes, you're talking about behind Evergreen Playfield Number 3?
Yes.
Yes, that will be removed as part of the project as well.
Can we still keep a small plaque or something there because that was dedicated to one of our former council members?
Yeah, I believe the field with the plaque on it's N-Bomb Field, so it's Mayor N-Bomb, yes. Yeah, I think we're going to talk about that as part of the process and how to incorporate that also into the field.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else. So, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the Recreation Conservation Office for grant funding of Evergreen Playfield Number 5.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next is the review and approval of Recreation Conservation Office, RCO, maintenance agreement application, again with the same team.
Same team, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the item tonight is to approve, review and approve a resolution. And this is for a local parks maintenance grant through the Recreation Conservation Office. And we typically, as you know, don't come to you to get approval to apply for grants, but this one's a requirement through the state is to actually bring a resolution to you to approve, to adopt, in order to apply for the funding itself. And we do this every time for RCO-only funding, but it's the only entity that I know of that requires this. So this project is a new state project, state grant program, I should say. We plan this grant program to be located, to be an improvement at the Sonics Basketball Court, adjacent to the Recreation Pavilion, which was originally donated by the Seattle Supersonics in 1990. I hope I got that year right, '89, '90? I have to look at the plaque when I get back. So the state legislature created this first-time program. It's really to assist local agencies with their deferred maintenance. As we know, grant programs most time address all the new fun stuff that everybody wants, either acquiring property or building new playgrounds. But there hasn't been anything to actually assist local agencies with their deferred maintenance. And so the legislature did create this $5 million program and assigned RCO to start taking applications for this. And the grant totals allowed is a range between $35,000 and $100,000 per entity. Each entity can only apply once, and it's a very fast-moving program. It can be utilized to create, just to not create any new amenities or facilities, but only, as I mentioned, only unfunded maintenance that we have. There's also additional restrictions. To be able to qualify for Phase 1 of the project, we can't have any ground disturbing activities, so we can't dig any holes. We can't, we can't do anything grading-wise, so this has to really be above-the-surface type improvement. So there is a possibility where you do move to Phase 2 projects that do disturb the ground, but then you need to bring in, you know, somebody that can do cultural resources or archaeological work as mandated by the state. So if you're digging a hole, you need to research that area and do surveys first to make sure that you're not going to run into any cultural artifacts of any kind. So we do not want to do that. We want to do a Phase 1 activity. So we don't want to do any ground disturbances. So as I mentioned, we're talking about proposing to do that Sonics Basketball Court. And this would potentially remove and replace all of the fencing at the court, including all of the backboards, the breakaway rims that are there, and the aging surface. So the posts themselves would stay, and we would sleeve them, similar to what we did at Evergreen Playfield Number 1, where they really just take another post and put it over the top of the existing post. And so that way, we could have black vinyl, which is what we're trying to move towards and away from existing fencing material. So the court itself has been resurfaced a couple of times over the years, but there's some unstable soil conditions, I think, that have continued to cause some cracking in that surface. So we would have a vendor try to fix that problem with some kind of geotextile fabric that they utilize, and then resurface the court itself. Also, the one last piece that we would like to do is, as part of the project, is repaint the Sonics logo. So that's something we'll continue. If we get the grant, we will work with RPAK on that as well and come up with a suitable replacement logo for that. So the maintenance grant does allow $100,000, up to $200,000, and it's 100% grant-funded. There's no match requirement, if I didn't say that already. So tonight, really just trying to get approval of that resolution so we can apply. It's a fast-moving process, so applications are actually due September 18th. It's coming around the corner here. And they're going to be evaluated and awarded by October 31st, tentatively, this year. And grants have to be spent by June 30th, 2025. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say a quick thank you. I know this was a question that I had asked about as part of a totally separate unrelated process, so I appreciate that we are looking at ways to support, you know, upgrading this particular area of our parks, particularly, I think we talked about it last time, but you know, I think it's the only public basketball courts that we maintain in Mount Lake Terrace, and it's exciting to at least know that there's possibilities out there for taking a look at things, and appreciate you putting in the work to go after it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had three presentations, I thought I'd wait to the end to say thank you, absolutely. Just want to acknowledge the very creative ways you all have gone and sought money, have thought about, well, how can we find ways to get ahead of curves? And then also just stayed back and been willing to receive feedback once you have secured money and figured out what to do with it, for the public's feedback. So thank you for all that you do. That said, I did just want to say, this is absolutely, what a fabulous council meeting from an outdoor perspective, which we have learned to really appreciate these last three years. If I followed correctly, that entire corridor, if all of this came through, would have some form of improvement, including a shout-out to the volunteers who keep that dog park looking amazing. And just, again, thinking about the draw into the community, especially if you go with that pickleball. I really think you might miss the mark if we don't figure out how to at least put that in play. And again, I'm just thinking about exposing it to different markets, and the "it" being Mount Lake Terrace. Lastly, just want to say, if I heard you just correctly, that you were saying you may replace the Sonics label, and I would just encourage you all to make sure you think hard and fast about that. I am not a basketball guy, believe it or not, but nonetheless, I do believe the Sonics are coming back. And if I remember correctly, that was officially licensed by them, which to me says, in my world, when they do come back, they're going to try to reactivate all those spaces, and I'd hate to see us left out of that because we got anxious and said we were going to do something different with that space. That said, if we do something different with it, please look at the Seattle Storm. It stays in the same theme of professional athletes and still basketball at the highest level. So if you do change the Sonics out because they don't technically exist, consider our Storm. And I am a basketball guy, I lied to you all.
One staff idea was actually to revert back to the original Sonics logo. Because the current logo is like the mid-'90s one, so everybody likes the original logo the best. It was one idea.
Sorry if I can jump in. I misunderstood. I thought you were going to go with something different. You'd stick with the Sonics, then, okay, then never mind.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I heard the word repaint, what that meant to me was, we're keeping the Sonics logo. And I'd just say, let's add, bring them home. And then if you want to bring them back, another resolution for additional funding for, say, our rec center, which we're way behind on maintenance costs. But with that said, for now, we'll start with this one. Move to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to apply for the Recreation Conservation Office's local parks maintenance program.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we move on to the presentation of the 2023 Second Quarter Financial Report. And on Zoom, we have Finance Director, Janelle Lewis. Oh, Janela.
Good evening. I will share my screen. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council and community for the opportunity to present the Second Quarter Financial Report. My name is Janela Lewis, and I'm the Finance Director. In reviewing the city's finances on a regular basis, posting the review on the city's website and highlighting the city council's goals for the budget, this is the purpose of this. This presentation is to show the revenues and expenditures for the second quarter of the year. There's usually a time lag of two to three months following the prior year to close the books and get them ready for the state auditor office. The second quarter report, the revenues are an estimate because they don't come in until after the 32nd. This was before I started this, so my notes are outdated. We actually were able to do this because we're presenting today, which is September 5th, and we posted the revenue back. We received that on August 30th. That's the sales tax and most of the taxes that we got. Have a two-month time lag. This is the history of the overview of the major city funds. You have the general fund, the recreation fund. We'll show the street operating fund, enterprise funds, which consist of water, wastewater and stormwater. And we'll be going over two of the capital funds, which is the real estate excise tax fund and the street construction fund. The general fund pays for city council, community and economic development, parks and property management, the city manager contracted fire services, which again will go away in 2024 with the annexation, fire, police, finance, human resources and IT, and municipal court, which is in-house and contracted help. There's a summarized list of all of the revenues that we have in the general fund. We've got the property tax, general EMS, and sales tax. EMS, again, will go away in 2024. We'll just have the general property tax. We have sales tax, our utility taxes, admission tax, gambling, business licenses, building permits, engineering fees, planning and zoning, liquor excise tax, grants, payments from other governments, passports. You know, this is the first year that we're doing that, so we started doing that in June. As of the end of the second quarter, general fund revenues were as follows. The proper- As of the end of the second quarter, general fund revenues were as follows. The property tax revenue for the second quarter 2023 were 54% of the adopted 2023 budget, which is on track. Sales tax collections for the quarter totaled 2.1 million, or 55% of the adopted budget. This is a decrease of 175,000 over 2022. Utility taxes were at budget at 50% of the annual budget, totaling 1.9 million for the quarter. Gambling tax revenues were slightly above the budget projections, totaling 596,000, or 54% of the adopted budget. Gambling tax revenues are back to pre-pandemic levels and exceeded 2022 second quarter revenues by 45,000. Admission tax revenues were up by 34,000 compared to the 2022 second quarter actuals of 25,000. Development fees totaled 974,000, or 38% of the annual budget. Development fee revenues are lower than projected in 2023, but they were also lower in 2022, then 2021. State share and intergovernmental revenues were 57% of the adopted budget and appear to be on track to meet budget projections by the end of the year. Fines and forfeitures were below projections at 46% of the adopted budget, but not as low as 2022, which was at 14% of the budget. Other fees and charges were below budget, totaling 69,000, or 24% of the adopted budget. Overall, general fund operating revenues for the second quarter were at 52% of the 2023 adopted budget, which is only 2% below the average for the past few years. And from 2019 to 2022, they were at 54% of budget. The total general fund operating expenditures for the second quarter were at 56% of the operating budget, which is the same as 2022. The recreation fund covers the revenues and expenditures of the city's recreation services, including aquatics, athletics, fitness, youth, and general recreation programs. Overall, the recreation fund has covered 74% of its costs through the second quarter. Recreation fund operating revenues for the quarter totaled 50% of the adopted budget. Revenues from aquatics programs were at 33% of budget, and athletic fitness programs' revenues were at 63% of the budget as of the end of the second quarter. Youth program revenues are at 68% of the adopted budget. And in here, you can see the table of the budget to actual revenues and expenditures from 2019 to 2023. Actually, these are, the green are the revenues, and the blue are the expenditures. The street division, this is the street operations fund. The streets division maintains 60 miles of city streets, 500 city-owned streetlights, 15 signalized intersections, 3,300 signs, 70 miles of sidewalks, numerous crosswalks and pavement markings, and vegetation for greater than over 19 miles of planting strips and unimproved ride-aways. The street operating fund expenditures through the second quarter represent 36% of the total 2023 budget. The enterprise funds, these are funds with revenues from user rates and fees. Like a business enterprise, these funds cover their own costs without help from outside funds. By and large, under Washington law, these revenues cannot be used to subsidize programs other than those related to the utility. The rates in each fund are made up of three components. A portion to cover maintenance and operations, a portion to cover debt on funds borrowed in the past to make repairs and upgrades, and finally, a portion towards revenues for replacing and upgrading the system in the future. And I think at the last quarterly report, there was a question about the revenues for the enterprise funds, and why they looked like they were lower than the prior year, and that was, for one, it was an accrual entry that we do at the beginning of the year that accrues the revenue back, and we base it off of how much of those revenues are based from the last billing cycle to the current billing cycle, and it was 63 days. So then we accrue it back into, or 63%, not 63 days, 63% of it is accrued back to 2022. And because we had revenue increases, the accrual was larger than what it was, but I'm going to adjust for that. So I think I told everybody at the 2022 presentation that 2022 wasn't yet complete, and so I'm going to be able to adjust that back, do the adjustment a little bit so the revenues are more in line with the rates from 2022 as opposed to the rates from 2023. And then there was also an adjustment from an account that had a reading of, it didn't have a reading, it started off, and then it bumped it up to 9,999 as a reading, and so it overstated it drastically. And that was from 2022. So I have to do that adjustment in 2022, move it back to 2022 from 2023. And you can ask me to explain that even further if I'm not making any sense. So those are the reasons behind why the revenues look lower this year as opposed to last year, and we had a, you know, rate increase. The stormwater utility funds, the goals of this fund is to protect and monitor water quality, reduce flooding, spill response, meet city's regulatory requirements, inspect 120 businesses, and educate the community about how they can help protect water quality. Manage stormwater through four watersheds, which includes 52 miles of pipes, seven miles of creeks, and 2,000 storm drains. See one here, in this beautiful fall picture. The stormwater utility fund, most revenue in this is based on a flat rate and is therefore steady throughout the year. The stormwater operating revenues total 2 million, or 49% of the adopted 2023 budget at the end of the second quarter, which is within the budgeted projections. But I'm, as I said earlier, I'm going to do an adjustment, so that will change this report and the prior 2022 fourth quarter report. Stormwater operating expenses, including debt service, total 41% of the adopted 23 budget at the end of the second quarter. And stormwater operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by approximately $838,000 for the second quarter. These funds will be used to make future debt service payments and capital, fund capital projects. The stormwater utility fund, these are the revenue expenditure trends for the second quarter from 2019 to 2023. You can see in 2019, if I showed you 2018, it would be a lot lower. And you have 2019, 2020, and you can see it increases. Once I do my adjustment, this will go down, this will increase. So then it'll be more in line. The sewer utility fund is also the funding source for capital improvements to the city's wastewater collection system, and for the city's share of the cost of capital improvements to a wastewater treatment plant. The goal of this fund is to manage wastewater from homes and commercial businesses and treat it prior to discharging. We maintain 66 miles of sewer main lines, 30 miles of laterals, 1,400 access holes, 5,500 sewer connections, and four lift stations. We partner with the City of Edmonds and King County for treatment and support maintenance and capital improvements. This is one of the lift stations, a view of it. The operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by 18,000, and these funds will be used for capital improvements and debt services. You can see the budgeted and then actual, budgeted and actual expenditures. These are the revenue expenditure trends for the second quarter from 2019 through 2023. These are the revenues, and then these are, the blue is the expenditures. And again, this is adjusted, this needs to be adjusted for that accrual and the adjustment that was made. The water utility fund, the goal of this is to distribute potable water to Mount Lake Terrace residents and businesses via 90 miles of distribution pipes, three water reservoirs, 900 hydrant access holes, 2,700 control valves, 6,000 service connections, and two-and-a-half million gallon water tanks. This is a project designed in-house to replace pipes installed in the 1950s and 1960s, that is what this picture is. We also do water quality testing and capital improvements. And this is an example of the capital improvement project. Operating revenues in the water utility fund are at 34% of the adopted 23 budget at the end of the second quarter. Operating expenses, including debt service, total 33% of the adopted budget at the end of the second quarter. Water operating revenues are under operating expenses by 173,000 for the second quarter. These funds will be used to pay for future debt services. So here are the revenues and expenditure trends for 2019 through 2023. You have the revenues here in green, and in blue are the expenditures. Water will be adjusted by about $300,000. Revenues totaled 389,000 for the quarter. This represents 27% of the adopted budget. These are the revenue trends for 2019 through 2023. The street construction fund covers capital construction projects to provide, preserve, improve street, pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic control facilities. The ongoing revenue sources for this fund are a portion of the city's allocation of the motor vehicle fuel tax, traffic impact fees and interest that accrues on funds in the account. Additional funding is provided by state and federal grants and appropriations, loan proceeds, interagency financial participation, and real estate excise tax. License tab fees that were initially received by the Transportation Benefit District are now reseeded directly into the street construction funds and used to pay for main street design and construction costs and other street construction costs. Because these funds are restricted by law to be used only for street construction and not street maintenance, they're kept in a fund that is separate from other funds. That's the traffic impact fees and the Transportation Benefit District fees. The capital projects supported by the fund are those identified in the Transportation Capital Facilities and Improvement Program, which is the TC FIP, and the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the TIP. The typical projects include street pavement overlays and seal coats, sidewalk and sidewalk ramp construction, bicycle routes, signing and striping, street construction, and traffic control and upgrades and installations. At this time, construction revenues and expenditures are consistent with budgeted programs in the TIP and TC FIP. The ending fund balance totals 7.6 million through the quarter, and 1 million of this is transportation impact fee revenues. And these funds will be used for capital improvements and debt service. And in conclusion, the city's second quarter finances highlight the council's adherence to the financial policies, and these policies are allowing the city to withstand the financial strain of the pandemic recession and what is currently going on. And I've said next quarterly update is planned for August 31st, but I think I'm planning on the next one to be in December, if I want to get those sales tax accruals and all of that in, because it's, you've got that two-month lag. So you have September 30th, and then so 11:30 would be the time that we would get those revenues in for the previous two months. Any questions?
All right. Any questions? Comments? Wow. I think you did a great, fantastic job. There are no questions. How about, I don't see anything from Councilmember Sonmore. Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you. Yes, great report. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, Janela, and the due diligence you've done to make sure that we're, we continue on the right track and keep our finances in order. I'm encouraged that most everything is within the budgeted frame as far as about halfway through the year, so therefore 50% of expenditures and revenues are, and we seem to be on track for the most part in most categories, continue to lag a little behind on the development service fees, which you had indicated last time, which was only a month ago. So I won't spend too much time talking about that, or we also know that there is the utility funds we've got to spend a little bit of time on, you addressed that previously, and then the housing needs fund we need to talk about as well. But I did want to go back to the slide of the real estate excise tax, and just point out again, I think I discussed this, mentioned this the last time around, just look at that chart where it goes up and down, up and down, up and down, and that, I will point out once again, is why this needs to stay as funding capital costs, not general fund or ongoing costs. And a suggestion I have, to carry previous Councilmember McArdle's flag for a minute, which was, we really ought to have a fund to help, that we just kind of build up over time and have available to fund big infrastructure or capital costs. For instance, the Rec Pavilion. We know Rec Pavilion is coming up. It's going to be a huge expenditure. It would be nice to have a cushion to be able to start from or build from. And here is a potential opportunity, if we look at that base amount, kind of figure a base amount of real estate excise taxes, and fund that, use that to fund our capital, general capital budget each year. But any time there's a spike, use that spike, those additional costs, those additional revenues, to fund that future capital needs fund. Right? So that's something we might just think about during the next budget cycle, and will, if any of us can remember that when that time comes around, just something that might help us in the future dealing with huge capital needs.
I can actually answer that question with, let me share the financial report. So we do actually have two capital funds, three capital funds that we use, and the third one isn't presented as a part of the presentation, and I could add it to the presentation. So let me pull it up. And I did see that in prior years, the, so we have the recreation fund, and let's see, where is that? Sorry, I'm scrolling too fast, but... So the real estate excise tax revenue, what we're doing is we're having a million go to the capital improvement fund, which is not a part of the presentation, but I can make it a part of the presentation. And that is where we have a lot of the recreation projects out of that fund. And then the And then the Street Construction Fund is set to get 4.2 million, and then we have 115,000 that's going to debt service. So what we're trying to do now is, you see this ending fund balance is keep it at 2 million. So then, any future transfers that we have, we're just going to try and keep this ending fund balance at 2 million, but continue to try and fund Capital Improvements Fund and the Street Construction Fund. So here's the Street Construction Fund, which has all of the projects that we're funding currently, and then we also have the Capital Improvement Fund, which you can see has a lot of the grants for Ballenger, Evergreen, that Jeff Betts was just speaking about and getting grants for these projects. You can see our park impact fees, what has paid, we've paid for with our park impact fees. And down here on this page is the capital expenditures that, these are the projects that we've been paying for out of this fund. So a lot of them are parks projects, police, then we have the city hall. Here's your, the HVAC systems that we're paying for with the police station, city hall, and the fire station generator.
Janelle, could you zoom in or enhance?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, is that better?
Thank you.
Much better.
So these are the projects that we are funding with this Capital Improvement Fund. So we do have a fund right now that does show the recreation projects, all of our IT projects, all of our, like the city hall and police and all of those, they go into this Capital Improvement Fund. Then we have a recreation or Street Construction Fund. Those are all the street construction projects that are paid for with the Transportation Benefit money and then the motor vehicle fuel tax. So we do have a fund.
Mayor Protam?
Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, well.
Does that answer your question?
So first of all, yes, I appreciate that, and thank you, I appreciate that all of our current REIT dollars are going for capital projects, and so that's the important part. And I guess my point is, A, we need to continue doing that and not divert any of those funds for ongoing funding needs. But the second part, I guess, what I'm thinking of is a reserve fund in addition to what we already have. So anytime those REIT revenues go above our budgeted projection of the base amount, so let's say we budget for 100,000 and 200,000 come in, so we create a reserve capital fund where that 100,000 additional revenue beyond our budget gets put into that for a kind of a long-term source of funding for future big projects.
Savings account for bank capital projects.
Right. So that's, yeah, so that's just the idea for us to consider, but yes, thank you for emphasizing the fact that all of our current revenues are going to cover capital projects as they should. Thank you. And again, great job, appreciate everything, looking forward to the next report.
Okay.
All right, I know we didn't have questions earlier, do we now have questions? We don't, so we can go on. And I think there is a thing at the, here. So it's going to be, yes, but there's nothing, nothing to be done on this one today. No action. All right, thank you. All right, so then now we can move on to the City Managers' Report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council, just a couple of things to mention tonight. First, we had to jump on the opportunity to pave 52nd Avenue. We had planned to do that work overnight in order to minimize disruption. Unfortunately, a window opened up that we had to take advantage of, or we would have been bumped back on the schedule for three weeks, and then we're getting into weather that is questionable at best. We are going to do everything we can, however, to minimize the impact on the schools, particularly the elementary school that's right up the road. So on Thursday this week, we're going to start that project at 9:00 AM, so after the start of school, and it's expected to close or finish earlier than 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM being the last time. So if there is any disruption, it'll be right at that afternoon pickup time, and we'll have detours posted and try to get people through there as efficiently as possible. But this is a point where we chose to minimize the pain as much as we can in order to get this done and completed, so we don't have to worry about it again. And then striping on that roadway will take place the next day, so get that completed. We also alerted the community today through the text message signup that we put together earlier this year and communications on our social media channels and things like that. Let's see, one, two, also mention the Day of Service coming up this Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM here at the Civic Campus, and give another plug to the Terrace Talk on September 13th, right here in this room, where we have a couple of exciting topics to talk about. Probably the most exciting topic, though, is you'll probably see the fountain out front being tested this week. So if you see water moving through it, don't get too excited, it's just a test, but we are, we're getting there to get that completed. Last thing I wanted to wrap up on, we don't often get notes that tell us how wonderfully we're doing. We get a lot of notes, but not a lot of them tell us how wonderful we're doing. This one, written on the back of a utility envelope, I wanted to share with all of you. Thanks for the refreshing of the city happenings, which everybody should have in their mailboxes or received last week. Wonderful, it was a wonderful job. We especially enjoyed the easy-to-understand graphics, the colorful photos of local people, and the larger print, and keep up the good work. So I wanted to make sure to share that with council. It's something our communications manager, Ricky, worked really hard on and is proud of, and this is validation for all the work that she did, and I think it's a great publication. So I wanted to share that with you. And thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Manager. Yay Fountain, and yes, the city happenings look great, so thank you to Ricky and everybody who contributed to that. Very, always excited about water, so I was going to say that'll be fantastic. I guess I did want to ask about just the construction and the school impact particularly, just given the timing of that. And so I guess one wanted to name to make sure that folks know who maybe aren't as familiar with our roads when we're talking about the construction on 52nd, that's Mount Lake Terrace Elementary School that's potentially impacted there, and then the resurfacing project that we have going on here in the town center, it impacts Terrace Park Elementary. And I guess I just, my question, Jeff, is around, I appreciate all of, I've seen the communications that have come out from the city around all of that and appreciate it. I know that there's been direct outreach to a lot of the folks that have been impacted. Have we connected with the schools to utilize their, okay, because I haven't seen, I will say as a parent at Terrace Park, I have not seen anything come from the school, and so obviously they get to decide what they share out and what they don't, but I would, I would love to be able to say to folks who somehow miss our city communications that we did provide that information to both schools and asked them to share it with their communities, so that at a very minimum, we've done our due diligence there. So if we could maybe just do one extra push, that would be really, really helpful, just because I think there will be impacts, and just want to particularly because it's the first week of school, try to make sure that people are as prepared for those extra minutes as possible, so that they still make good choices and drive safely, please and thank you. All right.
Yeah, I did confirm with our Public Works Director that we've reached out to the school district. I will talk with him again tomorrow and see if we can reach out to the individual principals involved in the schools.
I think that would be a great, yeah, a great option, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick questions. It's been a while since we've been together in person for the now new Terrace Talk, so I just want to make sure what our expectation is as councilmembers, because for the last three years now, we've been silent, but when we were in person, I remember being put on the spot, I just don't remember if I was on council back then. So just need to know, are we able to talk, not talk, or how you want us to handle that?
No, I would welcome all the councilmembers that are able to attend to attend and share the spotlight, absolutely. Talk to residents, I think all of us should interact and answer questions as best we can. If we don't have the answer, we'll make sure to get back to those folks.
Excellent. Addendum to that point, if we're all in the spotlight, I do think water's going to come up, just not in the friendly way we're talking, which is my way of saying, I hope we have an answer that we can stand with, and any of us can add to about water rates, because bills came out, and sure enough, they're getting closer to pitchforks and fires here, folks, but there's nothing we can do about that, or is there, maybe is the question. And then my second and final question is about the Day of Service and really disexpectations. We have, as a council, served at the end of these events, and I didn't know if that was an expectation, because I'm trying to time my day as well, because I will be there in the morning to help, but I didn't know if you wanted us there to serve lunch.
Yeah, so we are planning, starting at 9:00 AM through noon, and then noon to 1:00 is lunch, and I'm sure we would welcome folks to participate, councilmembers to participate in serving if you're able to.
Okay.
But it's not a requirement by any means.
Perfect, thank you.
So I guess it was a misunderstanding, because I didn't know exactly what we were supposed to do, because Lindwood is having their fair on 44th, starting around noon? Yeah. But we did, we did arrive around 11:00 in the past and then served lunch, and we actually served it, it wasn't sandwiches and such.
I think a lot of things changed during the pandemic, this probably being one of them, this is the first time back, but we'll make sure we streamline that process for future years.
Okay, so then I'll plan to be here a little bit longer. So we're here at 9:00, and then, okay. And then also on Terrace Talk, which used to be Coffee with the City, before the pandemic, before Zoom, we did, we were allowed to communicate when we showed up, but if the fourth person showed up, one of us had to leave.
Yeah, so Terrace Talk will be advertised, that there's a possible quorum, but obviously no decisions being made, anything like that, but if all of the councilmember, all of the council would like to attend the event, you're more than welcome.
Great, then we can all, we can all be here. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. For this annual cleanup, 9:00 to 12:00 at lunch, 12:00 to 1:00, I know we're here at, meet at the Civic Campus, which is here, and then, where's lunch going to be?
Here.
Right in here, in this room. Or I shouldn't say in this room, it'll be in this building.
In the building. All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the city council liaison reports, and I'm going to start, well, maybe I can start with Councilmember Payne Donovan, and then we'll move down that way and then back this way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it'll be real quick, because I have a light report, I, in the past two weeks, have only attended the August 31st work session this last Thursday, so there you go.
Thank you. And then next, with Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended our work-study session August 31st, and it's the beginning of the month, so nothing else, except I want to give everybody a heads up, in two weeks, the art show is going to start the 23rd, which is Saturday, but the preview, which is a invite-only, is going to be Friday, the 22nd, and the preview is for the artists and their guests and family to come. And so far, we'll do it like last year, where the chambers here will be the arts awards, and then we'll go to the library for the preview of the art show. Then the art show will be Saturday, the 23rd, for the public, through Saturday, the 30th. And if you're interested to do any volunteering, like a hour of signing people in or that kind of thing during the week or on the weekend, you can let anyone in the Arts Commission know, and I'm sure they'll be looking for volunteers for watching people come in and out. And that's in my report, unless you have a question. Oh, I don't have a time for the preview yet. It's usually around, what, 6:30, 7:00? I'll give you that time next week, which is the 14th, but it's around 6:00, 6:30, around there. But I don't have a, the postcards haven't been printed yet.
So it's basically a week long?
Yeah, it'll be one week-long juried art show.
Thank you. All right, next is Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 23rd of August, I had my monthly meeting with the City Manager. On the 24th, it was an action-packed night, I went to Economic Alliance of Snohomish County's Summer Networking Event. It was a good opportunity, I had a chance to meet some new folks in our community, which was great, then headed over to City Club, which is an organization that promotes healthy civic dialogue, had an event at the Edmund Center for the Arts, so a couple of good events here in Edmunds. It was interesting, so Rick Steves was their speaker that evening, and he talked a lot about his travels and kind of the importance of place and infrastructure in building community, and I thought that that was a really interesting, yeah, I thought that that was a great and interesting takeaway from that event as we think about comprehensive planning and the things that are important to our community and how we facilitate those as we look ahead to the future. So really interesting event there, and then headed to our movie night down at Terrace Creek Park and got to watch The Sandlot with my kids, which was fun, they've seen it more times than I have, but I don't think I've ever actually watched it from beginning to end, at least not as an adult. So that was a lot of fun and had a great turnout for that. On the 30th, the Red Cross hosted a blood draw, a blood drive at the Mount Lake Terrace Library, which was great. They had really, really great turnout, and they were excited about that, so had a chance to go donate blood, but also they were excited about the response from Mount Lake Terrace and are looking at, you know, the potential of coming back on maybe even a monthly basis, and so folks are looking for accessible ways to donate more locally, that is something to keep an eye out for, and I will try to share if I hear about future dates for that. And then on the 31st was at our work session, and that completes my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep mine short, I've had a lot going on, but most of it was with VOA. So on the 26th, I participated in the March on, the 60th anniversary of the March on Washington, put together by the NAACP and a couple of other organizations, had a number of speakers up at the Snohomish County Everett Campus. It was awesome. And then on the 31st, I was at our study session, and that concludes, ah, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I know we just passed a proclamation tonight on the Hispanic Heritage Month, which is wonderful, and I also wanted to bring up, I'm sure we had a proclamation years ago for 9/11, and I just wanted to bring that up too, and never forget the lives of the 3,000 people that we lost, 3,000 Americans that we lost to terrorism, and so I just always want to make sure we never forget. Onto committees, we did do our finance reports reviews, and I have two additional committee meetings next week, which would be the Park and Rec and also the left one, and also attended the work session, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still on, it's live. So on August 23rd, Snohomish, I had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering So on the August 23rd, Snohomish, I had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee Meeting, and we talked about the Snohomish County Energy, Environmental Sustainability Update, and that included things like Snohomish County's programs on climate resilience, resiliency, species preservation, youth engagement, and urban forest grants. So a lot of funding opportunity, another, more funding opportunities available through the Snohomish County Conservation Office that we ought to be tapping into as well. I think a lot of great programs that they've got that we can utilize here in Mount Lake Terrace as well. We also talked about jurisdictions annexation update, and as we all know, their annexation is a big hot topic, particularly throughout this, the entire county. Earlier today, had our meeting, the mayor and I had our meeting with our, the city manager, and while I did not attend the Rick Steves Talk, I will echo his sentiments about, as someone who travels a lot and appreciates the sense of place that is created, and recognizing that that is a role that we as government, as, as the leaders in the community need to embrace. Otherwise, it doesn't happen. And it's a challenge because it means it costs money, but it is money well spent, it is investment in our community, and creating that sense of place is important when we talk about creating that welcoming, safe community that we all have in our vision. So I, with that, I will not expand on my travels at this time. And pass, pass the mic over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for my report, on the 24th of August, I attended the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County's Summer Networking Event over at the Edmonds Waterfront Center. What a great facility that is. And Economic Alliance has a great networking session. I mean, an hour and a half of networking, and then another hour afterwards. And then on the 28th, I attended the Evergreen Fair, because the Snohomish County had the boards and commissioners dinner at the fair. So it's kind of nice to, to do other stuff after dinner. On the 29th, I also, I attended the Mount Lake Terrace Briar Chamber meeting or gathering over at Hemlock State Brewery, and really getting to know the, the people who are a part of that. So seeing the same people over and over again, you're starting to get to know the community. It's kind of nice to go. And on the 30th, I attended the Conservation Futures Meeting. We had 10 projects, and we funded all of them to the tune of just under $10 million. So I would like to see a Mount Lake Terrace project in the next one. And on the 31st, I attended the ALERRT training session. We had a mini-session with our, here, with the council, with our officer from Mount Lake Terrace teaching it. And this was the actual two-hour session, which is, if you could, because I think that the whole city is going to be taking it, right? The alert?
Yeah, the, the alert training, different, various areas of the city have already completed the training. I think the last one was at the pavilion for the second group.
Yes. And, but we, we had a very mini, small version of it here. And the two-hour version is really such an eye-opener that I would really, you know, next time, give us a choice of going to one, going to a two-hour session. I don't know why I decided to go to this one, but it was really, I'm glad that I did. And I think that's the end of my report. All right. Councilmember Woodard?
I apologize to the city. I should have included, I attended the EASC event as well on behalf of the city on the 24th.
Then, next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
So I don't really know how to bring this up, so I'm going to just put it out there as, in the South County here, so that's going to be Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds, and Lindwood in particular, members of those communities have been expressing interest in things like having conversations around, not rent control, but as we're learning, these new fees are cropping up, and our hands seem to be tied, the way codes currently are, and so some of these cities are thinking about, what do you do about that? I included Mount Lake Terrace in that because they did invite Mount Lake Terrace through me, and I've had one meeting, and the next one was to come back and bring this to your council. And we were trying to figure out how to do that, so I don't know how that's actually shaping up, but I don't like the cloak and dagger feel that I have. So I'm sharing it now because I questioned why they didn't just talk to us specifically, and I think this council can appreciate their responses, and you can figure out what their responses are, us being consensus-driven, and that gives you a lead there. But that said, there is action going. It's to be nonpartisan, and we're not necessarily councils. So it's really individuals who are concerned with what we're seeing, and we'll build out from there. So I'm just kind of saying that to this whole group, including our city manager, and I'll just leave it there. Again, I personally don't like the, the feel of it, because I don't think our council needs to come at it that way. So putting us on notice that there is action hopefully coming our way that will involve all of us very soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Woodard. I think it's a good topic of conversation. You know, it's one that Jeff and I talked a little bit about in our, in my meeting with him, when talking about like our legislative agenda, and I don't know if that's the, the best place for us to have that conversation, but since a lot of the state regulations preclude us doing anything at a local level, that's at least my current understanding of how, how to approach that, or the role that we could play as a council, but would love other thoughts and feedback from maybe folks who are more experienced in that space.
So, Mayor, if I could, I can research that and bring options back to the council at a future work session, and also look into the opportunities we have locally.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd echo the interest of councilmembers Murray and Woodard. I think they're, they're, certainly in terms of rent control and other sort of big things that the state preempts us from, or that the state constitution bars, you know, I think we, we understand those well, but I think there, there also is a really strong opportunity for the, the state to set standards around, or excuse me, the city of Mount Lake Terrace to, to discuss, set standards around some of the practices we see for, in our multifamily rental housing and, and other rental housing with, you know, junk fees, et cetera, and some of the things that might be falling upon renters that, that are not explicitly spelled out in their rental contracts. So I, I think, you know, I'm looking forward to, to having this discussion. I just want to chime in with my support. Thank you.
All right. Oh, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, it is an issue that is frustrating in many ways, because, you know, the junk fees are kind of just, it sounds like kind of ridiculous fees that are being thrown at renters unfairly. And, and has been pointed out, there's very little that we as a council can do as a body to prevent that from happening. I would encourage us, if, if that is something that the council, and I think we all agree is a problem, a challenge, but I would encourage us to take that to AWC and have AWC be the lead on something like that, rather than individual cities making that a priority, because it has less impact coming from individual cities as, as it does from, coming from AWC, hearing that message statewide on behalf of cities, saying, this is something that, a change that we need to, this is a concern that is out there on behalf of all of our citizens and all our renters, particularly in all of our cities around the state, that needs to be at least discussed at minimum at the state level. And it is going to be controversial, it is, there is going to be challenges and pushback, but the conversation, conversation is worth having, at, at least. And, but it needs to happen at a statewide level, and it needs to happen through statewide bodies, organized bodies on behalf of all cities, rather than individual cities. Anyway, my, my point is, let's carry that message to AWC and ask AWC to help carry that flag.
All right. Anyone else? So I just wanted to mention that I, that I asked our city manager to balance our meetings a little bit, and so all of this would have been on last Thursday. So we had a fairly, not a short meeting, but we had a nice meeting on, on last Thursday, and then we, we have a meeting tonight that's not going to go on till 11 o'clock. So thank you very much for listening when I said, let's balance this out a little bit, and you actually did it. So if nothing else, if I don't see anyone else with their hands up, so that I can adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned.